On the drill you did yesterday.
Yeah, not a problem.
I'll call on in my report.
Okay, thanks.
I am waiting.
Yeah, I got back Tuesday.
Yeah.
It's been pretty freezing here, huh?
No.
Do you? Do you? So much fog. When I drive down to the Ashland. There's so much fog on that road.
It's like my kids, you're on my side.
It's hard to even see on the road.
It's a tradition.
I have to turn your car on.
Oh, yeah. Well, I get stuck behind us. Well, they come down way above me. But historically, when they, back in the nineteen eighty fours here, they used to take them and run them down the Manashash Road. Manashash, no, not Manashash, it's a mountain road from the Bymark. They used to run them down there all the way towards Kidditas, and they'd keep them down there someplace. And sometimes they'd even go over to the canyon on the southeast of Kidditas County. The one that has a name about funny animal. Yeah, that's wild. Yes, but I've seen the sheep go down that road. For Kidditas.
One minute till we start, please turn off your phones. I just had a cold, I'm at the end of the cold, so I'm waiting. Anyway, just saying.
Matt got hit by a diesel truck.
That's true. I was like, hey, I got hit by a diesel.
He seemed tough, he survived a diesel truck running into him.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't, I was at the west state of change on my bike. I went into rapid access.
Yes, that's where you're supposed to go.
Yeah, for emergency, you go there.
Yeah, it was okay.
What happened to the truck?
They just kept driving, they didn't even notice.
That's why I don't rent a bike, I hope.
Yeah, thanks.
Made of steel.
Yeah.
You've got a steel bike.
Made of a magnet, I try.
Scanned in the road.
I said some choice words.
And he said them quite loudly, and I've gotten rid of the car. It's five o'clock now.
Okay, it's five o'clock now. Let's call this budget hearing to order. We're gonna start by reviewing the twenty twenty five budget before we call our regular meeting to order. So Jason, would you like to tee this up?
Yep, so on page four is a projected operating budget for twenty twenty five. This will be submitted with the ordinance resolution that's needed to request that we increase the levy by one percent, that's a total of one hundred and five dollars and sixty six cents for Hospital District One. We received about ten thousand five hundred dollars in levy contributions each year. I think it works out about sixty cents per household or something.
Yeah. This is something Bob always likes to comment on.
I know, it's just like, wow, hundred and five dollars and sixty six cents increase.
I believe we are the only hospital district that doesn't levy a regular tax now.
So request is to, for the resolution there on floor dash oh seven, that I can be able to submit reset levy by the one percent cloud. We also get new construction, there'll be an addition to this.
Minus twenty four O V twenty.
We've got the.
But the levy is twenty four O eight, right?
Yeah. So we have this resolution, budget, twenty four oh seven, and the levy twenty four.
Just for record keeping purposes, we're working.
Twenty four oh seven, yes, it's first.
So the.
So I see that there's the budget, and then there's the levy, so I apologize.
So this is the budget, on page four, budget will adopt the resolution about levy.
Okay, I see, we were seemingly tentatively.
How much are we increasing the net operating revenue estimate? Operating so hundred forty one. What percent increase is that? That was, I projected a four and a half percent charge master inflation increase of three and a half percent services. Where the, but this will not be the final budget.
It's just legal stuff to get done.
So we'll see a final budget coming, right, the December meeting.
Any additional questions about the budget, or about the resolution regarding levy?
I think the extra pennies is gonna be very good funds.
Yeah.
And keep up the inflation.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve resolution, resolution twenty four dash oh seven, the adoption of the budget? Okay, motion to Erica, second from John. All those in favor of approving resolution twenty four oh seven, the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Then we have resolution twenty four dash oh eight, which is a resolution regarding the levy and the increase of the previous year of one percent for a hundred and five dollars. A motion to approve resolution twenty four dash oh eight?
I move that we get those extra pennies.
All right. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, Erica. All those in favor of twenty four dash oh eight, please say aye.
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 Thank you all. Jason, anything else on the budget before we move on?
That's all I have to do, thank you.
All right, then I will adjourn the, adjourn the budget hearing and call our regular meeting, Kidditas County Public Hospital District Number One, to order. It's October twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four. Thank you all for coming. All right, so let's start with the approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? All right, motion to approve the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Erica, second from Bob, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, good. Consent agenda, we have the minutes in the last board meeting, who checks the funding? Minutes from the finance committee meeting, it's number twenty fourth. Hopefully you've all had a chance to review the consent agenda. Do I motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion from Bob, second from John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, consent agenda passes, thank you. Now it's time for our public comments and announcements. If there's anyone here who would like to make a public comment or an announcement, please begin by stating your name and where you're from, and please try to keep your comments to about three minutes. And please keep in mind that we do not respond to comments at the public meeting. But, but your comment will be responded to in a timely manner from either us or the administration. Is there anybody here who would like to make a public comment or announcement? Okay, hearing from no one. We'll then move on to the reports and dashboards, and we'll begin, as always, with Mandy Olson, our Chief Quality Officer.
My report starts on page nineteen. And I do have a few updates. First, I had sent the copy, twenty twenty five copy plan drafts to all in email, so you should have received those. Please do give us feedback, we appreciate that. The leaders will be working with their staff and each other to help refine those plans before they go to QI Council in December. But we would love your input. Any questions about the copy?
Everybody's gotten that email, I assume, with the copy?
And that's requested, the feedback was requested by November first?
I believe. I don't have it written here in the board report, but.
Yeah, it's November first.
You know, yep.
And then the process is, QI Council will, will approve or recommend that it be sent to the board for approval, and then we will look at it at our December meeting, which is our, which will be held in early June. Any other questions about the copy plan?
So then, I wanted to let you know that there was confirmation that two patients in Franklin County highly pathogenic avirion influenza. So that they were presumed positive by our local, or Washington Department of Health, but they were waiting for the CDC lab to confirm that, which they have. There's, so far, there's no human to human contact, and these patients have not had any severe illness. And they, I think their own population is low risk, but I just, I want to tell you that. It's definitely been on Anna's radar. There's been communications that have gone out to providers, both from our local health jurisdiction and from internally, to be on the lookout for potential cases that might need to be tested. And I think they've been working with the lab too, to make sure we have the right orders to use for any testing. So I think we're prepared if there is cases that emerge in our county.
If I recall correctly, and you might have said that last inning, but these individuals were tested because they are in a high-risk environment.
I, I can't rem, I think that there may have been animals that tested positive, and so that it was part of this whole exposure surveillance that they identified them. And there, Anna thought there may be some, there made some contacts in our, they're still doing all the contact tracing, and we'll continue that depending on how the rest of the labs come back. They're still waiting for confirmation on some of them. So it may be that there are folks in our community that were exposed to that same, to the, it's to the animals, or to the animals environment, not to each other.
Who makes the call here? When, when we have somebody with maybe symptoms that are questionable or suspect? And then how do we decide, oh, this is.
So there is guidance given to the provider, no, and then we can do that, anyone who tests positive for, I think, influenza A and has, yeah, you can, the, the guidance is given to the providers to help make the decision. If they have questions, they can contact the local health jurisdiction or the Department of Health.
Isn't it bio fire?
No.
No. So basically, any sample we collect for influenza, we hold, and if it's positive for influenza A, it then goes off for further testing.
Oh, okay, so that's not that part.
That's new guidance.
And the state lab does have to confirm, like, or approve that they will do that additional testing, but in general, people aren't sending tons of samples there, just willy-nilly. I mean, they're gonna approve it because we go through the process of working with our local health jurisdiction to say why we think this person needs that additional testing.
And that's for shoreline land? So that won't be all influenza A that comes through here, just ones who are higher risk or have some.
Positive, and then have these other things going on. Yes.
A lot of people testing positive.
We just had our first influenza A positive lab result in our system this week. But since June, that's the first influenza A positive. Other questions about that? Anna's our self-appointed Chicken Little, and she is always, I mean, she really does say, I'm Chicken Little. She's always on the lookout for this and on top of these and working. They meet weekly with Kidditas County Public Health. So we're, we're in close contact with them still, you know, post COVID, to make sure we can manage situations like this. And I don't, I, I don't know if I put it in my board report, but another thing that's going on that you might want to be aware of is that there are outbreaks in the nursing assisted living facilities of COVID that the health department's working closely on that may long-term affect our admissions, our dischargeability, so we'll see. I know that the administrator for the nursing home is working very closely with the health department, and they feel like they've gotten good response from them.
I've seen that pertussis has been in the news lately, is that something that we're?
I haven't seen that.
Yeah, okay, I should check my sources and see how close that was.
Uh, there was pertussis, but that was months ago in Shillane Douglas County, there was a big outbreak.
Like, maybe it was, maybe I was picking up someone else this week.
I haven't heard about it in a while.
I won't, I won't beg it to come visit us.
Still, yeah. Um, I think, so then, employee health-wise, we've got, I've got an update on flu vaccines. Of our eight hundred sixty eight people that are in our software, because that does include some people that are non-employed, folks too. We know that, let's see. We have documentation that five hundred and forty eight people have been immunized, so that's a sixty three percent immunization rate. But of those people we have documentation for, we don't have documentation for everyone. Ninety percent of those are vaccinated, and only ten percent have declined. If everyone we don't have documentation on decides to decline, if we assume they are declining, that would be a thirty seven percent declination rate. I don't expect it will stay that way because November first, they'll need, people will need to wear masks if they've declined, which we interpret no documentation as you've declined. So I think that we will see a big uptick in documentation come November first. Since we don't have to mask all the time for COVID anymore, I don't think people are eager to do that in office spaces or other places, so. Any questions about flu vaccine?
How effective is it seeing this share? Do people know yet?
I don't know.
Too early.
And then I want to let you know that we had a, the Department of Health show up this month for a complaint investigation. It was related to a privacy concern and how we handle that privacy concern. They did give us this week a statement of deficiencies, and so there was one finding. And Suzette, our compliance and privacy officer, was the person mainly working with them. And she and I already, she drafted a plan of correction today, and we've submitted that, they'll be reviewing it. I, I, I think that this is an opportunity to improve that we might already want to do with the new compliance officer and privacy officer. I don't know, it's nice, I disagree with their finding. I don't, we showed them documentation that they then said was not there, and that
What's rough?
It's very rough, so we're gonna see this as an opportunity.
Yeah. Vaguely, where the, was based on social complaint.
It was that there was, it was just that there was a privacy violation. People's materials were in someone, someone else saw their patient information, which does happen. And then we are obligated to follow our own policy on investigating that concern and notifying people if that has verified. So they didn't like our evaluation.
We followed our policy, we followed our evaluation, and our evaluation determined that we do X, Y, Z, and the investigators saying that you didn't follow our investigation, even though we have documented proof that we followed our investigation.
So it's not.
Disagree.
We, we can improve our process, and it's a great opportunity for Suzette to define and, and work on the systems we have. So it's not really worth fighting.
So not all privacy violations are equal, and we have a tool that we rank, use to rank the severity of the violation. And that's the tool, and we considered this incidental and not anything that rose to the level of having to report or anything. But they want us to document that, document thinking every time we.
And I, I, she just was struggling, and I said, do you not agree with this, our evaluation? And she said, no, no, I don't. And that's not what's written in the WAC, though. I, I don't know how you, how you fight that.
She gave no evidence as to why she disagreed?
She says in the finding and statement of deficiencies that we did not evaluate it and that we didn't provide notification, but I went, I went through it with her, and we, we did, so I don't. I don't think it's worth the battle, honestly. I really don't think it's worth continuing the conversation. I think it will not end if we push back. So I think it's a good opportunity to just with, our plan of correction is something Suzette would be doing anyway, and so I think it's a.
Just kind of move on.
An opportunity, yes.
Trying to look at it through, you know, there's eyes.
Yeah.
So this is the same investigator that came in June, she's new to the role and says it's very difficult not to go out in all directions, and I think she's looking for what she knows from her previous experience. So different perspective from D N B where they are searching for compliance, right? They want to see, what can we find that makes, that demonstrates that you do the, the right thing, you follow your policy? That is not an investigator's perspective, although we've had previous investigators that went this way too. It seems like she's looking for whatever she can find that's not compliance. Looking for a finding, and so that's frustrating. We'll just get through it. Uh, what else do we have? I think that's it.
I think, any questions about the report before we move on to the, the dashboard?
Your, your last line of the written report on summary of improvement opportunities. The verbal threats, July twenty twenty four. Just remind me why we're three months behind on the listing the threats, like August and September?
So they, it gets entered into the incident reporting system, then that goes to different managers, whoever's involved, to investigate it. And so there's an opportunity for it to be investigated, and then it goes to our security team, where they review it as well, and they validate whether this was workplace violence or not, and categorize it. So that whole process of that evaluation takes longer for us to have that accurate number. I mean, we can update it from the data we pulled directly from Verge, but it would then be.
This is fine, so this is being looked at, so you're confident these numbers reflect the July statistics, yeah.
So Anna, are we getting multiple threats per month? Would you say, or this anomaly? Would you say you're getting four threats per month, or this is?
I'd say four's a little low.
Well.
But I, I mean, I think the highest was somewhere in the teens. But it's, I mean, yeah, it, it's a thing, and, and most of it is verbal.
Yeah.
But there are incidents, especially in the emergency department, where there is not.
One of the things we do in the Safety and Security Committee is workplace violence is a selection that the employee makes when we put a Verge in. We treat employee-on-employee threats or claims of workplace violence through different systems. We have the HR system to deal with employee-unemployed. We also go through and do an assessment of, is this really, do we consider it workplace violence and something we want to pursue as staff? So not everything ends up being workplace violence. It's, it, there are odd categories that Verge allows people to select. Any employee and employee-to-employee type incident ends up in HR, so it kind of gets spun out of Safety and Security.
Other questions about the report before we move on to the dashboard? Okay.
This month, we were gonna talk about Medicare wellness visits, so that's on page twenty two of your packet in the top left corner. And so a little shorter than what I normally dig into with data, but I just want to really explain what this measure is looking at on this dashboard, and then if there's specifics about Medicare wellness visits themselves, that would be more Dr. Martin and Stacy to talk about. But the denominator for this is unique patients, so it's not number of visits, it's patients at family medicine, our primary care clinics, so prime, uh, family medicine, Elensburg, or internal adult medicine, so excluding Peds, who have a financial class of Medicare, so it's only Medicare patients.
Include Medicare Advantage?
I don't know that. I, for some reason, I think, no, I think it's traditional Medicare, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, I think that's accurate.
That it's traditional Medicare. I think, I think that's, and some of this, this measure is one that we report to the Rural Collaborative, and they based it off of work that they were doing, individuals were doing for the, their ACO. So it's a fairly standard measure as far as what the numerator and denominator are. Like, this isn't a K V H specialized measure. But it does include, so because we have specialty clinics embedded in those rural health clinics, so family medicine, Elensburg, all of those, it would include, like, a cardiology patient, if they were only seeing cardiology in a year and not in internal and adult medicine, they would be counted in this in this denominator. So, like, we have orthopedics included in family medicine, Elensburg. And if a patient went and saw, a Medicare patient went and saw orthopedics only in a calendar year and not FME, that would be counted in this. It's because of the rural health clinic designation. So same with cardiology or neurology, if a patient only, so our numbers might actually be, if you really only included the primary care patients in those clinics, they, they might be even higher, right? Because let's say someone's just been referred to neurology, but that's not who their internal medicine isn't their PCP. It wouldn't be expected that we would have done a Medicare wellness visit by Dr. Gustafson, right? That would, that doesn't make sense. So might even have a higher numerator if we had the specialties carved out, but that's, that's not how RHCs work.
And for what it's worth, last year, Medicare did extend and require Medicare Advantage plans to cover wellness visits.
So they could be included. I don't know the answer to that. I can, I can get that.
Where, where is it, like, regionally or nationally? Not in the number of, of people who get the wellness fit.
Well, so that, that green line is what the Washington Rural Health Collaborative averages. It's around twenty percent. I don't know as far as state or national where that's at.
What do you think the hangup, is it a two, having two visits, or is it people are just feeling, I'm doing fine, I don't need it, or?
I think it's an access issue.
I think it's a combination of access, and I think it's also whether or not patients find value in that appointment.
Wait, sorry, what do you mean by access issue?
Not enough providers, not enough appointments. So you may have your annual last year in October, but I can't get you in until January of two years from now. So it's just, we're offset by quite a bit.
Is there any other education component in patients knowing that this is a good idea to come in and have your visit? Or is that understood generally by the population?
Some people, I think we're a resurregel, we've got a copy to look at this next year. We haven't done a good job of refreshing the education on an annual basis to really drive home a value for that. We do talk about shared decision-making, and, and that first appointment is you're talking with your provider to review all your risks and decide, what do you need for labs, what do you need for imaging? What do you need for labs? What do you need for imaging? Percentage of population is like, I'm fine, I don't need that any. Percentages, I can't get in anyways, so I'm not even going to bother.
How long does a visit? How long does this visit take? How much time does somebody need to commit for this visit?
It's pretty extensive. It can be thirty to forty five minutes. Um, the clinics right now. Were not standardized F M C E, it is all one hundred percent time with the provider. Um, internal and adult medicine and F M E do it where a nurse sits down and does a lot of the education with you. And then the provider comes in for about the last ten minutes. And talk about shared decision making, where we want to go. But it takes a lot to prep for these because you look over what testing they've had done the last year, what to do for them for maintenance. So a lot of prep work goes into it and then the education piece, so they're about thirty to forty five minutes.
So it's not it's not two visits?
It is then what happens is you decide on what you're doing, usually go have labs and then it generates a second visit. Where you talk about where your results are and what what do we have to monitor how you're doing with your own personal history.
Both visits need to occur in order to meet the measure or just?
No, just the Medicare Wellness is that first one.
And I just want to point out it's based on coding. So the most recent two months are usually not complete data. Because it can take a while for the coding to all be complete. So it's it's more accurate to look at like June, usually the. The most recent two months are are lower than the others. And that's I think why they use a rolling twelve month average. Um, with the Rural Collaborative, so you don't see the the line bop up and down that much because it's a rolling twelve month average.
How often do patients come in for this visit and while they're there, they say, oh, my gosh, I'm painting my site and the visit converts to no longer a wellness visit?
I don't have a percentage, but that does happen.
It's fairly common and uh, patients. So the wellness visit has no copay, a complaint does it does for a chronic care visit, chronic illness. So they've now taken a service that they had no cost. And by adding a complaint, now they have a copay. So that's that's a challenge. The other thing uh, that I heard all the time. Was, oh, you don't need to test for that stuff. I would know if I had cancer. Um, which uh. Yeah, the the number of people that we've surprised with their cancer diagnosis uh, is daunting. It's much easier as a provider to say, yeah, I understand the value of this. I understand why we're recommending it. Um. There's a reason that we have public service announcements running saying, get screened for this, get screened for that. I don't know that we do a good enough job of saying, here is the schedule of here is all the things that are recommended. And the purpose of this visit is to make sure that we don't get. Lost and taking care of your diabetes and forget to do these other important things. And that's that's the value that we have to figure out how to communicate.
How do you? How do these visits initiate? Does it rely on the patient to to call or do they get reminders or?
I believe they get reminders. Stacy's not, yes.
It's it's a combination of both and we're talking about and rolling out in part of Quapi is that we just schedule you for the next year. Once you leave, we after you did that second visit, we will you again for your first one. Because once again with Medicare, it is. One year. If you go show up a day early, sorry. That doesn't work.
Like dental recall every six months is similar, you just.
I think. Some of the challenges patients don't feel like. Like I'm one person, I'm not I'm my wellness and my. Wellness and my illness together, right? Like it's all together. Why would I separate these out into separate visits? And I think if we. Capitalize on this being a planning. Visit instead, right? This is us for for us to plan how we're going to address all your care needs over the next year. That so I think there's a bit of, yeah, how do we change the the framework or the mindset of people about it so that?
Translate the concept to something that's.
She said to see the value in it instead of I've got to waste my time coming in for two visits. Um, or you're charging me for something that should be included, you know, they don't. That doesn't make sense, but if you're like, we're going to plan our whole journey with you over the next year. To make sure that you stay healthy and your needs are addressed, I think that comes across differently, so that's.
We've been working with Michelle and her marketing team on the Medicare Wellness flyer and to go up on the digital display to explain. What is really Medicare Wellness visit, what's included? Why is it important? So we're working already on on trying to improve education with our patients on it.
Where would the flyer be seen?
I don't know yet. But right now we're putting the goal is they're on the digital boards as you're sitting in the clinics and waiting, you can see him go through in the digital boards here.
Can we provide them to Fred Myers like on their senior Tuesday, ten percent off mornings or something?
Uh, put them up in Hal Homes and.
Yeah, Senior Activity Center, places where. They congregate.
The question about Medicare Advantage. It's pretty undoubtful it has anything to do with the Medicare Wellness business. Because the Senate in our state is starting to really report how Medicare Advantage is doing a lot of denials. And a lot of other things that are reducing the quality of healthcare. So the the people that are getting these Medicare Wellness visits uh, have regular Medicare as opposed to a Medicare. Uh, advantage and if we have somebody wants to do a Medicare uh, wellness visit and they have Medicare Advantage. Uh, we should mention to them that their insurance possibly should be changed. Uh, otherwise they wouldn't be able to succeed on this because it's highly likely that report that the Senate put out. Uh, it also came through the Washington State Hospital Association. Uh, how awful Medicare Advantage has been uh, increasing. And the the quality of healthcare for people. Uh, is this really increase decreasing the amount of of payments and stuff like that? And so that denies a lot of things. And I'm sure Jason uh, knows how bad Medicare Advantage has been doing uh, supporting. A healthcare error because we probably don't get very much payment from them.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah. We're yeah, Jason and the whole. Organization very aware of that, so it's good that so you sort of reminded us that.
But I think that the Met Advantage generally covers these. I just think that they're not swept up in the metric. I think that.
Find out.
They may be an annual exam versus a Medicare Wellness exam.
You know, potato work tracking.
Yeah, is there any that would it be ethical to try to promote Shiba since it's a? By um, of a. Volunteer organization to help with the net.
Yeah, I've been incorporating Shiba into the communications now too. I missed them in the letter that I'd sent out um, a few months or was that a month ago?
Because that age group, they're just so confused.
Yeah, yeah, I talked to mine, it's really simple.
Is that education and communication the most important as people approach Medicare age versus after they've already chosen or can is there?
Both, I think you want to hit it early though, once once they're deciding what to choose is the best time versus trying to coach them off of one plan onto another. Because some of the conversations they have with one person. I I love my Met Advantage plan, why would I change like, well, when was the last time you were hospitalized? I've never been hospitalized. But well, that's awesome. It's the greatest plan for you as long as you never have to use it and I hope you know. But when you do these examples of things we experience.
Right.
No, that was a good letter.
So next Tuesday at nine thirty at Hal Homes, Shiva is doing a presentation on Met Advantage and and your choices. Open enrollment gift. Um, I think I talked to Michelle today about having somebody go and listen to the message and. And um, Shiva, by the way, it gets funded through K C H and and Kidda Des County, so.
And the the information. Announcement that we get. That'd be appropriate.
Yeah.
Put it in there.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Staff and.
Yes.
And and I met with one of the Shiva representatives yesterday and she had indicated. If you are Humana Advantage um. Person in the county this year, you actually got canceled because I'm offering that again. And she said, that's the best window to jump back into Medicare without having to do the uh, you know, the the physical assessment via preexisting condition. Stuff, so. Yeah, Humana will still offer, but one of their most common, most sought after plans they are determining. So all those people either migrate to a different Humana plan, which I'm sure they'll probably try to self enroll into. Or Humana auto enroll into. Um, but we also have two new ones, All Well and Well Care are two new Medicare Advantage ones in Kidda Des County selling here. And I did report them to the O I C. They have no network with us. I've never heard of them, never spoke with them. They're not in our network, but the O I C did authorize them to sell the the test company.
So I looked them up, so. Well Care owns All Well, so it's two.
Yeah.
That are the same.
Seventeen owns all of it.
Yeah, yeah. Out of Califor- out of out of California.
Yeah, and everyone will be out of network.
Yes.
They join.
Those are all well and it's Well Care.
All right, so let's uh, bring this back. Uh, is there anything else that we have for for Mandy about any questions about the Medicare Wellness visits or anything, Mandy?
I just have one other thing I'd like to say that you may think, oh, that target of sixty percent looks terrible, right? But it's in part because um. No one's doing great at this. No one's at like. Sixty percent was the goal the A C O I think set for their members to to try and get to. So that there's there's a reason that the A C Os are trying to do this or that Medicare is pushing it. It's because it it is difficult to achieve. No one's at a hundred percent as far as I know. So um, sixty percent is a high goal. Very lofty goal.
When we can only move that needle so much.
So I guess that raises the question of. What we're doing to get there, right? If if one of our main obstacles is access and resistance maybe from the patient, then. What can we do to get the?
I think we have a.
That's the Quapi.
Quapi.
So check it out, the Quapi, and I think the partnering um, physician Quapi also, right? That part of that is looking at satisfaction for our physicians and um, and so retention. The more better retention we have, the better access we have.
Good.
Yeah, we're looking at piloting the Quapi and internal medicine. It'll entail a dedicated nurse to the wellness visits. Like like Stacy was explaining, they would tee up do almost all of the exam and the physician or provider would come in for the last five, ten minutes.
The one dedicated nurse could do eight Medicare Wellness's a day. And so right now we're lucky to get ten a week.
In one one clinic or overall.
In that one location, if the pilot works well, the goal would be each team and F M E would eventually have their own nurse. So you would have three, you've got the blue team, the orange team and the green team. Each one would have one nurse dedicated to Wellness's where they would do thirty two a week from each team. So significant increase in access right now.
And. There really isn't much of an exam involved. It's more going through records. There's a couple of screening. Um, there's uh, what's called Mini Cog, which is uh, screening for uh, mild cognitive impairment. There's uh, a couple of tests that are looking at fall risk. Um, but for the most part, it's going through and what are your risk factors and what screens are indicated and when really passed on.
Any other questions for Mandy about the Medicare Wellness visits?
Oh, but this was a sleeper topic. This was very interesting. It's just.
Anything else about the dashboard? Any other questions or anything that you guys want to talk about on the dashboard?
Uh, readmissions? Well, I mean, we're just like up and down. Is that a fairly normal to go back? Even further, is that a fairly normal?
Yes.
Um, up and down.
And. I don't think we've talked about Medicare Wellness or uh, readmissions here yet, but this is not the C M S measure. This includes inpatient, we're harder on ourselves here than um. And we're still right around the average, but we include inpatients to obs or obs to inpatient readmissions which are not included in traditional readmission data. Um, so.
Well, this is the one I was going to ask for an expanded discussion at some point.
I think that's on.
Yeah.
Did we not have that teed up yet? On my list. No, we don't. So do you want to have?
What do you have on there for next time?
I have clinic falls.
Have you started doing anything on that yet? Uh, to prepare for next month's meeting?
No, and I think the reason that we're going to talk about it though is because it's. Or is that one coming off or was um, suicide risk assessment was probably going to come off the dashboard? Uh, it's up to you all what you want to hear about. Prepared to.
Would you like to hear about readmissions at the next meeting?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, Mandy, would you mind?
No problem.
Focusing on that at the next meeting, please?
Yeah.
Any other questions about the dashboard? Anything else?
Thank you for your interest in discussion, I.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Look forward to hearing about.
Does any calls will be?
Or maybe I'll talk about both. I don't I don't get real excited.
Whatever it is, it'll be informative.
All right. Thank you very much, Mandy. Uh, next up, we have our C E O reports from Julie Peterson.
Yeah, so I live in my C E O report with the I V solutions shortage that we have. Um, Dee Dee's going to give us an update in her report on that, so she has a much more extensive knowledge of that. I did want to mention that um, today the hospital CEOs met with Senator Patricia Cruder. Who is likely to be the next. Insurance Commissioner. We had already met with Nick Brown to talk to Nick Brown, who again is likely to be the next attorney general. Though wish those amazing needs calls and network adequacy without being prompted was one of Senator Cruder's real concerns. So she's aware of it. She's aware of it in rural settings specifically. We also spoke with her about denial and delays. Um, about the algorithms and and artificial intelligence programs that the plans are using. To just summarily deny large value claims. Talked about prior authorizations and the delaying care to Terry's point. Um, the U S Senate has recently come out with a report about. The percentage of denials for Medicare Advantage plans as opposed to all other things. And then we also talked about prejudgment interest, which is something that uh, the hospitals do not like. And Senator Cutter did like, so um, both those I think were very productive. Um, we're going to see some real change, I think, in the O I C's office going forward. Um, Mike Kreidler had been the Insurance Commissioner since two thousand, so. They currently have funding for forty two positions in the office that are not fit. So that's.
Insurance Commissioner's office?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons that very little gets done.
I didn't get a response.
Yeah, so.
Four different positions, I wonder how many.
I it it's critically. So um, other than that, I do is Trishan, I think I saw Trisha. Um, I would appreciate it if you could update the board on the dialysis program. We have some great news this month. Trisha? All right, I'm gonna see if she comes on. Um, Jeff Yamada ran a drill yesterday. I'd like him to update you on as well, Jeff.
Yeah. Yeah. Hey, you can hear me, right? You guys can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, sorry, um, web, the web uh, cam is not working very well. Um, we did a incident response event yesterday. Um, for our server security and so this was around um, a ransomware attack that actually mimicked a real one for a different organization. Um, with our, one of our companies called Fortified, um, and they do some of our other testing as well between um. Our annual security risk assessment, monthly vulnerability testing, pen testing, penetration testing. Um, and we would be the, we would call them in case we suspected that we had our ransomware attack as well. So we ran a tabletop exercise yesterday. Um, I think it lasted for three hours. Um, and like I said, mimicked another organization's uh, real ransomware attack. Uh, we had a lot of participation from um. A lot of different areas of the hospital from patient care, nurse managers. Um, a lot of senior leaders, Julie was there for the entire event. Um, ancillary departments, lab imaging. Um ancillary departments, lab imaging, um facilities, finance, HIM. And of course, uh probably three quarters of the IT team uh was involved in this. Um great discussion. Um and I think we came away with a lot of appreciation. For all of the different areas. Um and so some even commented from the IT side this morning. Um that was very interesting to hear what, you know, some of the other areas do um in in an event like this. And so uh I think it went very well. Um we had a lot of input from everyone. Everyone was very um interactive. In the, in the, in the event. Um and we'll get a report um at some point. Um that will show, you know, maybe some of the gaps or areas that we would need to focus on for the future. Um and that aligns with, you know, whether it's our security risks and other things. Um but yeah, so it wa- it was very good. Uh it was probably the first event that we've done for uh KVH. And it'll probably continue annually from this point forward, so um but that was about it. Anybody had, yeah, anybody had uh any other feedback? Julie, did you have feedback on how you think the event went?
I. It was sort of frighteningly innocuous. It's like he started this entire event by saying. The diagnostic imaging tech noticed that they were not receiving uh orders on one of the computers back in D I. And it just snowballed all from there. And it's like, what do you do? And and it was a very realistic. People said, well, you know, first thing we do is complain. We probably took it in. Go to the emergency department. And so they they walked through operationally. Uh but you didn't immediately think, oh, ransomware. We've been it. So I thought it was really, really valuable and. And really um. Just now, it was frightening as well. So I did not come away. Yeah, exactly. But I did appreciate all the participation. A lot of people were there, very engaged. Um and made it a very valuable exercise.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can. You wanna talk about dialysis for us?
Sure, I'd love to. So um I came to KVH in January of twenty twenty-one. And right away, uh Dr. Martin started talking to me about the need for dialysis in the community. So uh it took many, many years to find a solution for us, but we did. And we engaged with a company a year ago and we went go live um in July with our dialysis, our inpatient dialysis program. And it's very, very exciting. We chose two great um telenephrologists who are partners in this. And we chose a company with great technology for the dialysis machines. And so in two months, we've done seven, we've done dialysis inpatient on seven patients. And we've done seventeen dialysis treatments. We actually did two different patients in one day, which is really remarkable. So the charges for inpatient dialysis run just under four thousand dollars for each run. So not only is this a beautiful thing for our patients because they don't have to get shipped out of Kedatass County. Um but it will be a very financially viable program too as our volumes ramp up. And a couple of other things I wanted to say that patients are telling the bedside nurses that it's just wonderful to be able to stay here. And they use an iPad to talk directly to the nephrologist and the patients are loving that too. And these two nephrologists that we engaged with are very, very supportive of our program and very accessible. And our nurses report, they're just wonderful to work with. So all in all, this has been a great um deployment. And we now have a solid new service. And we have special nurses that perform the dialysis treatments in the unit. And um it's a great addition to the Kedatass Valley community. Are there any questions?
That's great news, Trisha. Thank you. Any questions for Trisha about the inpatient dialysis?
What do you see as growth in this? It just depends on the patients that come just kinda randomly, so to speak?
Yeah, you tend to have higher volumes in the winter, so we're just coming into the higher volume period of time. And once the people that are on dialysis that we don't even know exist in the community, once they, the word spreads that they can get their dialysis. Here, we'll likely see people showing up in the ED with other problems. And those are patients that we sent away before if we thought they needed dialysis or if they were already dialysis patients. So it's pretty exciting. The the nephrologist told us that, you know. I think I proposed that we might do fifty treatments the first year, but we're at seventeen treatments in two months. So um both nephrologists thought that we'll far exceed that, that we'll be over a hundred treatments in a year.
Doctor.
One of the things that the folks who have been on dialysis historically have learned that we can't help. So they self-select and will go someplace where they have dialysis capabilities. Once upon a time, that was regional when regional was still in existence. I've had friends who were on dialysis and told me that they weren't satisfied with the care that they got in Yattamon. That really was part of what started driving this years ago. I think that it's a fairly small community and once they learn that they can get care here, they won't drive past us. And that's really where the growth is gonna come from.
We had one patient or patient example that Wayne, our um coordinator shared. We have one community member that's a frail elderly woman and she receives two treatments a week at a clinic. And she does frequently miss one of those. If she misses one, she's in dire need. She presents to her ER, gets transferred. And they now know that they present to her ER and they can stay here. And they're just absolutely appreciative of KVH adapting. And being able to do that treatment here for this family right now.
That that raises the question about inpatient versus outpatient. So we're just doing inpatient, but it sounds like the distinction is a little blurred here.
Well, the way that patient would would get dialysis here would be if she were sick enough from missing a session, that she warranted admission. So and and I've seen patients like that over the course of my career uh where. Years ago, we had a patient that uh when I was in training that we admitted several times over the course of a month simply because he would miss dialysis. We would admit him and he would leave the VA and stop on the way out at the hot dog stand out in front. And get a hot dog and chips and missed dialysis and we'd have him back two days later.
What was the statistics I've asked Trish to see if she can chase down is. We know we are also able to admit patients who might need to be dialized while they're an inpatient. Um it turns out they don't, so they're not showing up in her numbers yet. But this, again, as a patient, we previously would not have admitted at all. Because we didn't have that once they were in bed. So again, appreciate that. This was a long haul for the board. We talked about this for years. Um it came to our attention and Dr. Martin's attention in that it was behind behavioral health, the number one reason. We were transferring patients out of the emergency department. So saw a need and really stepped into it and appreciate that.
Great.
I think the last thing I wanna say is that um as we were working on this and during the COVID um pandemic. We actually transferred a patient to Oregon, to Idaho Falls for dialysis. Because that was the closest bed. And we also sent another patient to Oregon. And that's a horrible thing for a patient and a family then to be discharged from home so far away and to have to find their way home. So patients here don't have to do that anymore. And that's great news.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Trish.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome.
Questions about that, about the dialysis? Alright, Julie, uh anything else?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions about Julie's report before we move on?
I wanna thank Julie for putting in the IV shortage information. Because that's a hits, that is based on a historical uh thing. Uh back in twenty fourteen, we had another United, in in the United States, IV shortage that went on. And we have a wonderful outstanding materials management team that is doing a really good job with our IV solutions. Cuz going through this report, I wanna thank you again, Julie, for this report. Uh it's it's a very historical thing. Uh but that was ten years ago and uh we survived our IV shortage here. And uh I think a lot of other the hospitals did too. But we had a good outstanding uh materials management team there too. So people are concerned about our IV shortage. Uh our materials management team was doing a really good job managing the access to the IV solutions. And what we can do, uh cuz it's interesting, instead of getting a thousand mil bags, we're getting five hundred mil bags. But we can use two of those to get the same amount of fluid and stuff like that. But we did survive in twenty fourteen our IV shortage. And so I'm a thousand percent sure we will survive our IV shortage uh along with this too. Thank you, Julie.
Yes, and in the report, I suggest that after materials get settled and the expansion project is complete. That would be a really, really good game book for the board to go on, materials management, they've been outstanding.
I was thinking that that might.
Been moving this week, but they're still busy.
Yeah.
Give them a little time to study.
Uh Mandy, would you mind just putting, Mandy, we, would you mind putting in your calendar and, you know, early February or something to? Thank you.
Question on, so LNI is imposing penalties for one minute late or break?
Correct.
That seems impossible to gauge.
It and and it is. So um again, we're still looking for solutions as as this is rolled out. And um I I think one of the concerns that the hospitals have that LNI does not share. Is that the employee can self-select a minute early out of their break. And at which point you have to pay them time and a half.
Exactly, clock back in.
Yeah, they, so it's, I don't have to walk in and say, I need you back on the floor. If they decide on, you know, then go back to work five minutes early or two minutes early. Then uh we can be penalized for that under LNI's rule, so.
That would come by like an audit of something or a complaint or?
Yeah, probably a complaint. And you know, LNI, most of LNI's fines are complaint-based investigations.
So unrealistic.
Yeah, this is peace and don't get DeeDee started. Um breaks have to be scheduled now, so you know, people can't. It it takes a lot of flexibility away from the employees as well. So I I don't believe the rules as they're currently written are sustainable. And I think over time, we're gonna have to, we're see that they are tweaked and changed.
So do you have, is there someone who polices like, hey, you gotta stop CPR and take your break and. We're gonna, someone else needs to do that.
It's like a Saturday live skit.
Yeah, how insane it could be. It's.
How long have we been working on this?
Um the rule came out June twentieth and it was supposed to be affected July first, I think. So.
But for years, we have been working on this. You know, we do want our staff to take our breaks.
Yeah.
Then.
Right.
It's just now the documentation around it and and there have been some rule changes. You know, before the the employer interrupted the break. So if we interrupted, then it was considered interrupted. But now, you know, as Julie was saying, the employee can choose.
If an employee chooses to do that, does it automatically excite them thirty minutes or only if they make the decision?
There's a whole bunch of documentation.
That's that's.
Of my time.
Yeah, LNI hasn't really thought through or hasn't cared a thing through.
And we have another, uh there's a few things that are going to affect us. We're gonna have to take a look at whether or not we change our time for. Rules right now, we're on the seven eighth rule where it, if you clock in seven minutes after. It drops it back to the twelve o'clock or the the fifteen minute mark. If you are eight minutes after, it bounces you forward to the next fifteen minutes.
Sure.
So we're gonna have to take a look at that. LNI is. The attorneys are all saying go minute to minute. Well, okay, so we can do that. So it's gonna take a change in in how our clock is configured. The issue with that then though is also if they clock back in a minute early, you gotta pay them the the third dollar penalty for that.
That impacts the providers who are might be in the middle of doing something. Okay, I gotta leave or pay time and a half for.
Yeah.
Doesn't make any.
It's it's draconian and that's the kindest thing you can say about it. It's crazy. Yeah, a minute. And then so some hospitals are looking at putting measures into place where you can't clock in early. So you're gonna have people standing there by the time clock. Or I suspect you're gonna have a variety of people saying, I couldn't clock in. I needed to get to work. You know, it's just gonna be a mess. I was just trying to get control of.
Yeah.
Wish it will be looking for legislative. So so this was their attempt to to get a step. And they failed to do that. They tried to say that it was, they were actually rulemaking as opposed to interpreting and and that. Uh they didn't give me worth of argument. So they will be going back to the legislature with exactly these kind of comments next year. Trying to get some of the bumps for that.
Yeah, thank you.
As you're very obvious to us, part of one of the needs is looking for a whole new driver manager system that will have more features and bugs.
Anything else uh for Julie before we move on to the HR?
I had a question about the construction one, which is actually Wayne. I'm not sure, Wayne, are you doing a new drill report today?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, I'll wait for that.
Okay, so let's move on then to the HR and staff development report.
So um as promised, we um revamped our our data points a little bit. Just to give a a broader picture of the workforce that we are. Utilizing in the hospital. It's more than just um who is just paid by the hospital. So it's important for us to recognize. We still have to to manage this population for um employee health. Uh badge and security, you know, all the, all the things, compliance. Uh we need to know who's coming and going, how long they were here. And to do that. Um one of the things that we're gonna do with new HRAS systems is to make sure that we have every um type of person in our facility. We should be able to look at that, know who is here, how long they're supposed to be here, what type of. You know, are they contracted? Are they travel? Are they students? That sort of thing. So that we can look at one dashboard and know exactly who is in our facility. Uh so we are working on that. Um and then we also wanted to um show the twelve-month rolling average. Um and all that is showing is it's demonstrating movement. Are we moving in the right direction? Uh because what you have in the tables is raw data. Um and that's, that's great. Um I wanna see how we're doing comparative to our um goals, but I just wanna see, are we moving in the right direction toward that? So that table is actually a twelve-month snap snapshot. Each data point is the previous twelve months. Um so that number is never gonna match the table until the January twenty twenty-five. Board report, then you'll have twelve months equalling twelve months. Um so the year to date is just from January to to now. But the twelve-month rolling average is just showing movement. Are we moving in the right direction? And we are. The other thing that this is gonna demonstrate is um are we putting into practice sustainable measures? And if you see wild uh variances in the data, that tells me that's probably an environmental factor. Um and not necessarily, I mean, you you wanna know, okay, what is the reason for some wild swings, right? I don't have that here. What you have is slow, sustainable, um natural movement. Um so that to me says, okay, we're, we've got good practices that we're putting into place. And that's a a trend that is sustainable. Uh so that's what we're looking for with that. Any questions on the data, the tables?
Um I don't know if you have it uh in front of you. If you look at the first workforce population chart. A couple of things, total employees, seven eighty-seven for September. Where are those numbers? What what part of this chart is adding up to seven eighty-seven, if you know that, you know, top of your head, or we can deal with it later?
That should just be the first three, full-time, part-time and per diem.
And then total workforce is the rest of the group added in?
Correct. So it'd be the the seven eighty-seven plus the students, the agency and the volunteers.
Okay. And then um on the third chart, general recruitment, you got employees hired. And for example, in September, you've got eleven. The other thing I know we were kinda looking for is employees hired. Are they hired from within or is it a new human entering the KVH workforce? Or is it a new human entering the KVH workforce?
That's a new human entering the KVH workforce. That is not including uh transfers.
People who are jumping from job to job inside the organization. Okay, so that's new employees hired.
I prefer new human. And we also broke out the postings versus positions. Um, because you can have ninety postings and a hundred positions. Um, some postings might have two or three posi- uh positions attached to them. And I know that was kinda skewing some of the math. There were some questions on that, I think at the um at the first board meeting I was at. So we wanted to break that up to show um if you're, if you're looking at the postings, this is how many we have, and it's really reflective of a hundred and ten open and active positions that we're recruiting.
And the unique applications received, is that all including internal or is that only external?
No, those are only external. So those are new applications. And what that is telling me is that we're getting the word out and we're reaching new sources. So that's a good sourcing number.
Excellent. Good. Well, I, I really appreciate the, the detail you added to this month's report. It's very, very informative.
And Dan, um as our, uh, to speak to our employer of choice uh strategy, um I wanted to pull our overall satisfaction rate for onboarding. And this is really wonderful to see is like the onboarding experience can be a really stressful experience for a new employee. You don't know what you're doing. You're coming into a strange place. There's lots of questions, maybe some anxiety about starting a new job. Um, and so that first impression is critical and sort of um building that relationship. And so uh of our overall satisfaction, we are currently scoring a four point seven out of five. Um, which means people are ve- feeling very, very welcome. They're coming on. Um, we're establishing that relationship early and quickly. Um, and then be, uh, down below, you just had some top comments from, from some of the folks that came on and participated in, in that survey. Uh, student and volunteers, uh, we just had forty students, I think, yesterday, high school students from uh Ellensburg. Thank you for that. Uh, but it was really great. They were engaged. Our staff um had a great time talking to them about uh I got to participate in the um apprenticeship program and you could just see their eyes kind of light up. Um, and it was really cool. I had three of them say they wanna be future nurses. And they were asking about, um, you know, you know, what does that look like? And I said, well, you're gonna come work for us, clearly. Um, and we wanna make sure that uh we're part of that process for you. They were asking about apprenticeship programs and what's that, what that looks like um while you go to school. And I said, you know, there's a lot of things you can tailor while you go to school. Um, and then we had another young lady, I just interviewed her today for a class project as well. Um, she actually wants to go into psychology. So just really establishing those relationships with our local student population. And we have another group coming through in, on November.
I just love that we have student and volunteer services.
Oh, he, I think Kyle is just knocking it out of the park.
Didn't, it didn't used to be like that. I just think it helps everybody.
I am, I'm really excited about the, the work that he's doing on that. And then the staff leader development, um, we have that as part of the coffee for twenty twenty-five as well. Jen is getting her train the trainer certificate for leading with uh emotional intelligence. Then she will get a secondary uh training certificate um to train for leading with psychological safety. And we are also going to um introduce just culture elements into our team steps program and bake that into our um Neo, new hire. So uh very excited about that work. Uh, we've got our benefits fair coming up. We'll be having some presence on our sites, Radio Hill, the MAC and the ALM as well. And we are in the process of working with a lead management company to assist us with our um Fmla, Washington paid family leaves and ADAs as well.
Can you expand on that at all? As far, what do they bring to the equation that we shouldn't be doing in-house?
Yeah, so a couple of things. One is just the minutia of the paperwork and the tracking is really critical. And those are high dollar claims if you get that wrong. So having a company that can track that consistently, also um tracking down the paperwork associated with that, it, it, there's kind of a lot of bird dogging that you gotta do. Um, and so that company can work on the minutia of all that. While we are stepping back and making sure that our managers are involved, our managers are you can know when this person is returning. We're sort of coaching the employee and the manager through the process. And just making sure we have good labor relations through the whole thing. So um that's really uh impactful. And right now, we are, the other thing that it does is it kind of puts the uh approval in a more objective through a more effective lens than having just one HR business partner who's looking up at this employee, who's giving them, you know, the, the story that is sometimes really difficult to hear. Um, although you still have to follow the rules, it's, it's, it's pretty strict on what you can and, and should do according to your policy and practice. You don't wanna deviate from that. It's really, really difficult for some folks when it's stand, you know, when that story has been told right in front of you, not to deviate from that. So it kind of puts some arms length away and make sure that we're consistent um with how we respond.
And if you picked an organization to work with then?
Yeah, uh, we picked um FMLE source. And the reason why we did that is they will also do state specific. And that is just huge right now. Um, particularly in Washington, you can't require someone to take the Washington paid leave and run it concurrent with Fmla. The employee has the choice. So you are really looking at the difference between, is it, are they gonna be gone for three months? Are they gonna be on for six months? And how do you kind of manage all that? And when is it protected? When is it not? That sort of thing. So having a company that can really map that out, explain it to the employee, and then we are acting more in a liaison fashion for labor relations and making sure the manager knows what's going on. It also will provide a dashboard to the manager so that we have some situational awareness as to when this person's going to return.
Anything else, uh, Janine, that you wanna call our attention to? Any other questions for Janine about the work? Thank you very much, Janine. Uh, next then, we have our expansion project updates uh with Wayne.
Currently, what we're uh wanting to look at, what you're gonna see up here with it, Manny Lee's gonna bring up is not regarding so much the expansion project as what we're gonna cover is the ortho and surgery project that we're opening up into. Uh, everything is still, as far as expansion project goes, everything's still going well. We're still within budget. We're still pretty much within our uh secondary timeframe that was set up once we got past uh some of the primary delays that happened, you know, at the very start. So we're doing really well on it. We are still looking at having completion uh around February of twenty twenty-five.
Was your question, uh, John, about the expansion project or about the? Okay, so uh.
Uh, what she has brought up here.
Tell me where you.
And it is such a um large format. Yes.
Yeah, I can read that.
Primarily what we'll need to see is gonna be there on the left-hand side, uh, anyway. Yes, thank you. Uh, um, so everything that we have going on at this uh particular time is uh all in pre-construction. We've uh got all our uh general contractors set up. We've got all our subcontractors setting up and doing their purchases for everything that is gonna be have long leaked on it. Um, right now, they're, uh, of course, I'm sure you'll understand that some, uh, some things will even be worse than others due to uh some of the things that have happened at the docks. Uh, for the hurricanes and, and everything like that. So, but we're keeping a close eye on that. And uh generally, we, we think that everything's gonna be coming in uh timely. Uh, the actual construction that we're looking at, uh, we're intending to start on the uh first of December. Uh, we have a few movements that we are gonna have to make prior to that. As far as uh currently, ortho is in the MAC building. Yeah, so we won't have to do anything with that, but we'll be bringing general surgery over into the fourth of area. And it's, uh, it is a little tighter area. It's a little less square footage in there. But I've worked with uh Johnica and I believe we've got it kind of figured out what we're gonna do on that. Uh, there's some other reconstruction things that we will have to do as KVH as far as uh, we have placed the location of the onsite construction where the contractors will have their stuff, uh, where they'll be going into the building so that it will interfere with patient flow uh coming in from parking lot into the ortho building for their general surgery appointments. Uh, we'll also be following up with our other building where has the urology, the people leasing and, you know, making sure that we're not interfering or disrupting anything that they had going on as well. Um, we'll be getting with Michelle as far as making sure that we're providing our patients uh everything we need to know as far as the changeovers to where uh they'll need to go versus, you know, where they have been going. And uh everything to that extent, um, making sure that we have signage uh as well. Pointing the directions that uh they'll be following uh to make sure that we don't have anybody just accidentally stepping into the construction areas or something like that.
Free ops in there? Free ops in there?
Uh, no, free op, no.
Not in the area that's being, uh, free up is gonna stay where they are at first. They'll be up front.
So it'll be really a burden with uh move and then move back.
I just, I, I really want to allow that Wayne was able to get that from four hundred and seventy days down.
That was my question. I wanna hear that story. That's impressive.
Monster in these meetings, so. Sorry about that.
So, um, but yes, uh, you know, right there in phase one, we're looking at forty-eight days. Uh, for the start to completion on that, um. The uh, once we are out of the, uh, once we take over the building on February tenth, then we go into uh moving general surgery back over into their own building and hoping, you know, everybody's happy with what they see. Uh, you know, we're happy with our new home. Uh, then from there, uh, we go into the ortho building, we'll tear down the wall that separates the current lung care and the ortho areas. And, you know, it'll pretty much be a bull gutting of the building and uh new reconstruction of the interior, the whole thing. Uh, prior to taking over, uh, the second part and going into the uh phase two, I still have a little bit of work to do with uh Stacy and, and um with Rhonda as far as where we're gonna place one care and uh how we can coordinate uh symptoms with that. I believe I've got a pretty good option with that and had a little confirmation on it today. So I don't think we'll have any difficulties on it whatsoever as far as making that move. Um, once we go into that, uh that's really uh all the pre-construction on that is gonna be fairly simple. There's not really gonna be any kind of difficulty in it. And then we uh go through seventy-eight days of construction on it. And the turnover is expected uh to be see, yes, uh, June thirteenth. And we're tomorrow. Um, so that's when we start moving ortho back uh from the MAC. We will bring one care back into the building as well. We'll be tested as far as our commissioning and tab reports on all mechanical. We'll have our inspections and our certifications on all clinical equipment, the x-ray, uh, everything that that's gonna be going. And uh that's, that's really, that's pretty much it. We'll have four.
So Commissioner Ward had a question a couple of months ago about on that ortho spot, there's some flex in that on the floor. If there's anything, uh, have we looked into like, is there any feasibility of making that a little stiffer? Especially for all of those.
The age of the, uh, that floor and everything, um, what we're primarily gonna be looking at is as we're pulling up the carpets and the.
Seeing the condition of the.
Right, we're taking, yes. And uh any place that uh we can pass them down a little tighter, they, they actually have new hardware now that uh works really good uh for these cases. And uh does a really good job. If there is any portion of the board that we need to look at replacing, we, we'll just go in and cut it out.
It'd be nice to get rid of any apparent squeaks and stuff. It just reminds me of like a mobile home from the nineteen seventies. You know, you walk in, you wanna feel like you're in a solid building and, you know, and so.
Yeah, no, I expect to have some improvements on that. Next, I'll, we'll go back with floor and we'll work.
And uh, and then I was gonna make a comment about how impressive the number was that you were able to bring it from four seventy down to two seventy-four. And I don't know, you wanna speak to me more about it, but it just sounds like you just got serious about looking at how things were organized and asking questions.
The uh, the contract specified that they would have the four hundred and seventy days to, to complete it. And so that's what all the contractors were in their, you know, processes. Uh, it was actually a question that Julie brought up to me. Since this was, you know, uh, as advertised, uh, related and put a whole lot of consideration into it, that Julie asked me if it would really take that long and I told her no. So we went into negotiating uh some of it. Uh, there was a little bit of give and take to it. They didn't, uh, they agreed, the contractor themselves agreed with me that they, it would not take that long to do this. And but they, with the consideration of the timing of the year and the seasons and, you know, stuff. Sometimes, you know, the weather has a little bit smaller thing to it. So we kinda opted on the final liability uh that they would pay if they didn't meet that timeline. And so there was a little give and take on that. And that way, they were feeling better as to say, okay, we'll nail it down.
So you had to like cut the per diem unliquidated damages in half, I think, so.
We just kinda worked it out.
And so my follow-up is uh parking, you know, knowing that um expansion's still going on. I'm sorry, it's second construction. How are we mitigating that for staff and patients and stuff?
That is uh definitely another part of the bridge construction that I'm working on with uh especially with OB uh being right there because.
They can park in our vacant houses.
Where we're, uh, where we are moving, uh where the contractors will be setting up, we'll be taking over a pretty good chunk of the patient parking and everything. With although already being over there, the MAC that alleviated some of it. With although already being over there, the map that alleviated some of it to begin with. We are moving that area that we are taking over is also where the OB doctors go in. To that side of the OB for C-sections or emergencies and everything. So we wanted to make sure that they still have the access into there. And I am adding a different control access to the east side door over there. So, you know, moving their parking spaces, I'm taking it over three parking spaces for them. So that they can get it straight in as soon as possible. I'm also adding an additional. Either one or two additional handicap parking spaces right there to that area.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Wayne?
I can just make one comment. So the total general surgery expansion, or not general surgery, surgery imaging. Expansion, we've spent a total of twenty seven point nine million here to date. That includes the MRI, which was a separate capital approval. Total budget, including the cap, the MRI was thirty, it's over thirty point six million. So we have about three million projected left to spend on the project per this, which is really, and will we be spending it, do you think?
We are in the, really. The expansion part of this complete. I mean, the new construction is complete. There's nothing else to really leave on that. We are going into some more remodeling. But it will shortly be just renovations as far as finishes and stuff like that. So it'll be a lot less than what was initially planned as we go.
Yeah, the, the speed of spending has significantly.
They think it's the same.
Any other questions for Wayne? Thank you, Wayne. Anything else, Julie?
No, that's it.
All right. Let's move on to operations then. Before we get started though, I guess I, I should note that. He's last meeting with us. I know that we really appreciate the work you've done as C N O for the last, how long has it been there?
Two years, almost a year and a halfish.
Before that as E D director, we're really sorry to losing you, but. We hope you're happy in your new position.
Thank you. I'll still be around.
On health and community and the hospital, so we appreciate it.
Thank you. And, and I am still here in the community, so you will probably still see me engaged with some of the other things that I do out there. Thank you.
It's right as rope you back in sometime.
So now can we talk about Baxter IV fluids again? So as Julie had, had said, I'll, I'll talk a little more and you know, Terry, you're definitely hitting one department. But as I was reading the board report, you probably noticed it's mentioned in multiple reports. So not only Julie, you know, as our leader, but the whole patient care services, so really all other departments I remember. Pharmacy, so that's Rhonda's report, and then Bonnie and materials management also mentioned it. So I think in saying that, one thing we do really well here is we all come together when something happens. And I can list off, you know, numerous things, including the pandemic. We had our meeting put together really quick when this happened and when the news hit that Baxter was not going to be able to provide. The IV fluids and the irrigation solutions, not only to our hospital, but to other hospitals. And yes, Bonnie and materials management, they jumped on it. We had, we were having daily email reports of what product we had on hand. We started doing the reports of, okay, well, how much are we using? Nasser from pharmacy, you know, he, everybody just jumped into action. So I do want to call out a few of the departments to thank them. Not only just coming together, trying to figure out a plan of, yes, the product and how we were using it, but also the communication. We immediately got communication out through Dr. Martin to the providers, the nursing staff. The house supervisors were rounding. We do daily rounds on mentors and C C U. That the house supervisors were there to just keep that, that message going. As one of the things that Terry had mentioned also was, you know, taking those thousand, you know, the big liter bags and breaking them down. So Nasser jumped right on to ordering empty bags. Not something we usually keep on hand. He was, he managed to get some and it's a, it's quite a process. It's not just, oh, get a syringe and a needle, pull it out and put it in another bag. It is something that is done under very strict conditions. It takes time. It has to be done correctly because you're thinking, you know, this is a sterile fluid going into somebody's body. And it's not only the IV fluids, but it's also the irrigation fluids. So it's those bottles that, you know, you might use a whole bottle for a littleitty bitty cut. Do we really need to be using that full bottle? Because you're going to throw away the rest. The emergency department, they jumped on. Dr. Schmelzer had communication out to, to his providers. Very quickly of how we work with our EMS folks. You know, the EMS people will come in with a patient and they'll have the EMS bag hanging. A lot of times we're like, oh, we've got to get them on our pump, so we're going to change out the whole thing. And it's like, no, we need to conserve that bag and not let anything go to waste. So the emergency department jumped right on trialing oral, you know, pushing oral fluids. Versus everybody gets an IV and everything has to be, you know, through, through the vein. Gatorade, you know, getting Gatorade and, and understanding that, hey, this is another way we can hydrate patients. Bonnie and Nasser were discussing how to find Gatorade and. Well, there we go. So this is like your, you know, that toilet paper thing again. Go find Gatorade. The inpatient units, again, I think it was just that, that communication to the providers. Really looking at every patient individually every day and who can we get off those IVs? You know, everybody doesn't need that IV TKO to keep the vein open. It's a very small amount per hour. And we're throwing up a thousand liter bag and wasting part of it. So they made changes there. Surgery is another huge area and they, they've made changes immediately. And I, and I, when I say changes, I want to make sure it's understood that this does not impact the safety. Of caring for the patient or the quality of care. It's, it's basically just looking at and ensuring we're not wasting anything extra. Diagnostic imaging, you know, that's an area you think that, well, they don't do IVs, but they're using saline to flush that IV contrast. So all those IVs that we're doing, we were hanging those little bags, only using a very small portion of it and throwing the rest away. Well, those little hundred milliliter bags, you know, they're, they're involved in this, the supply. So right now we do have a meeting coming up of looking at our IV baby backs, which are put in those little bags. Because at some point, you know, we're not going to be able to get, you know, there's a potential that we won't be able to get them. We're kind of thinking and just planning, you know, it's kind of like, you know, Chicken Little, you know, the sky's falling. But it's better to be prepared and not have to use those plans, but we want to have those plans in place and communicated. The other big thing, so obviously communication is huge and, and it's great to say that we're doing, we're doing great. We have not impacted our volumes, but we can't lose sight that this is still going on and it may be going on for a few more months. So we're still doing a lot of that communication with the staff, not letting them forget it. We put little signs on all the Pixis machines as a reminder for the nurse that yes, this is still going on. And it actually has like a little QR code that they can scan and learn more up to date with what's going on with the Baxter plants. The last call out I want to make is to our community partners. We had two of the community partners reach out and offer us their supply. So Mariposa provided us with IV fluids and Mountain View Dental supplied us with irrigation solutions. So it's a shout out to, to those, those two. And you know, and it's not like it's a thousand of them, but we're at a point like, you know, every day we're going to make the most of. And taking that thousand liter can turn into, you know, four two fifties that we would use on four different patients. And then just the other thing that we're very involved with, we're not only how our K V H little get together meetings. But the, the Northwest Healthcare Response Network, so that's our state emergency preparedness. They are doing calls that are bringing all of the players to the table. And it's not only hospitals, it's dialysis centers, it's dialysis patients that do peritoneal dialysis at home. It's the blood banks, there were even some of the skilled nursing homes that do IVs. So they have these calls, Wish has been involved with them as well as our rural healthcare collaborative. So lots of communication.
Is there any word on like when the Baxter plant will?
You know, I did not bring all of those notes. I, I've heard there were bridges that had to be rebuilt. There was flooding that their, their, their employees are back to work. The plant, I believe, was still standing. It was just a lot of water damage. They do have other plants that have ramped up their production. We even have supplies coming from overseas, but as you know, it takes a little while to get that tanker across and then go to the distributor plant and then. Get allocated, which, you know, all of the organizations are not getting what they want or what we're used to getting. So that allocation is much more smaller. As I said, we're fortunate that we've not had to, you know, impact our electric surgeries, you know, what we're doing. But I do know other facilities at other hospitals.
For something so simple and so critical.
Yeah, I know.
What I've heard is that we shouldn't expect our supply chain to be back to normal until the first of the year.
Yeah, I've heard the same.
And DeeDee's talking about coming from other plants, it's Baxter plants in Hyrum and there's one in Central America, I want to say. But that's. This plant accounted for sixty percent of the US production. We hoping that we will learn that healthcare needs to have redundancy built in. That learning of like manufacturing makes good financial sense, but it makes a lot of the emergency preparedness sense.
Well, and I would, again, a reminder that this resurfaced is. We had forty seven items that were still on allocation. So we lost track again, because we have a very good materials management team, that the supply chain is remained very good.
There was a FedEx strike too, like two weeks ago. Supply chain is just constantly getting their butts kicked, but you know, materials management team is the best. I read Baxter's update, I think they have twenty five hundred employees, they're all accounted for. The facility is structurally sound. They still have some remediation staff working alongside their current staff. But their staff, twenty five hundred staff are like without houses, without all their belongings. So they're obviously not just jumping back to work, they're going to take care of their personal affairs. Baxter donated like three and a half million dollars to their staff. Their foundations to try to get them back on their feet as well. It's not just getting their staff to work, they're likely to deal as well.
Your mention of the forty six items. Was the takeaway there that that is not necessarily perceptible by those in the organization that goes on floor. Because materials management is so efficient to manage, it's like, that's really cool.
And they're cheap. They're very, very good.
Frugal, right?
So they not only manage to keep us supplied, they manage to do it at a good rate.
Fantastic.
Any questions for DeeDee?
So on the rest of my report, I do just want to call out a kudos to our trauma coordinator, Danny Piper. Who, what did manage to get our level four documentation all settled and we are officially. Recategorized as a level four trauma center, which is very important for what we do here. And Amy Morse is permanent with family birth place and we will be posting or her, her clinical educator position is posted. And I do, I do know we have some internal interest on that job, so I envision we should get that filled. And Amy will still help a little with the NAC program as she is the state director and, and help onboard. And we should have a, our third cohort hopefully by the end of the year. And otherwise, I don't know if anybody has any other questions.
Questions for DeeDee?
You're not going to make this hard on me?
Of course.
Nurses who work at night seem to be a real challenge. Anything you can just, has the world changed? Has it always been this way or?
I mean, I, I don't know how many times I.
Preferred shift.
But and usually that's.
Very special.
There's a special person that does like the nights.
Several friends who did the night shift, they loved it.
And usually that's your entry point into an organization and then you just wait for that day shift to open. I've done it multiple times, but as Janine says, it does take a special person to stay there. There's a few that.
Breed of folks out there that love the nights.
Yeah, it's a different analogy.
How many total positions hospital wide would fit that category of a nurse in the night shift? Is it?
Oh, I'd have to look that up.
It's, it's a big number.
Well, it's a huge number, but I mean, it's going to be your ED, your men's or C C U, family birth. And then, you know, of course we have our surgical services who are on call, which is part of that position.
Call is a, is another one that is difficult. People do not want to take the call. It used to be kind of understood and, and the rules of engagement are changing. I mean, the landscape of, of what, you know, work-life balance looks like also. You know, there's enough studies out there that say interrupted sleep impacts quality, all the, all the things, right? We're learning from all that, but that's another one that is, is. What is becoming difficult feels is the call.
Call out response time or part call, nurse call response time, how soon do they need to be here? Does that depend on which department they're in?
Where, well, it's, so it's usually just surgical services for, like, you know, that's the stat C-section is the, you know, going to the OR. We've actually been working.
Timely question.
Thirty minutes. So right now thirty minutes is what we're finding, like, like part of our trauma application. That is part of, you know, being on call to respond to the OR is thirty minutes.
So that affects where the pool of people we can draw from where they live.
It does, but we also do provide call, sleep rooms or this, you know, to stay in one of the little houses. So we do have people that know that when they're on call, they just have to stay here locally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for DeeDee? Thank you very much, DeeDee. Right, next up, we have Rhonda Holden, our chief antiflary officer. Rhonda, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening, everyone. My report begins on page thirty five. And I apologize, I'm on my phone, I'm having internet connectivity issues tonight, so I'm not sure what's going on with that.
You're coming through loud and clear, we can hear you.
Oh, good. My only update would be in home-based primary care and we did sign a contract with a company called ProVance for remote patient monitoring. So I really do appreciate all the work that Tricia put into investigating and demoing companies to help us to find the best one. And we're really happy with this company because the developer of it was an attorney for CMS. And so we feel really confident that it will, this platform will help us to meet all of the regulatory guidelines. That are in place for remote patient monitoring. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Rhonda?
I see you made a note that you made offers to MRI tech and ultrasound tiny updates since you wrote this report.
The MRI tech has turned us down, so we're back to interviewing. He was heavily wooed by other employers off, offering him things like cars to drive. So we, we couldn't be competitive with that. The ultrasound tech, the ultrasound tech just interviewed on Friday of last week and she still has her offer and we're hoping to hear back.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, fingers crossed.
Yes. Any other questions for Rhonda? Thank you very much, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Stacy Alair, our chief of clinic operations. Stacy?
My report starts on page thirty seven and I want to talk a little bit about internal and adult medicine. We are still limiting new patients. We have quite a backlog of existing patients. But are happy to say our next provider, we anticipate starting in January. So it is exciting to have Dr. Woodard and three APCs in that clinic after the first of the year sometime. So we hope to work through that and expand our new patient availability. The other thing that's not in the report, I just had the. The other thing um that's not in the report, I just had the neurology staff meeting. Dr. Gustafson let us know that Swedish lost, I think he said, two of their neurologists recently. And this week alone, we've received twenty referrals from outside KPH for our neurology clinic. He said a big portion are patients who are getting treatments for migraines. Um, it's difficult to find someone for there to go. So I know neurology, neurologist is on our list for recruitment, but this is the first time we've seen that outside KPH volume. That same week, we had thirty-six referrals from internally from KPH to neurology. So while they look really good now, they're like, don't be surprised, next month, that next third available will probably go up a little bit. So um otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Stacy?
Uh, I'm gonna ask you about vinyl and rapid access, so that it's to the point it needs to be replaced or should be?
We have an ugly carpet stain that environmental services has cleaned multiple times and finally Rick said it's never gonna go away. So when Colin worked with engineering to look at, to replace that area with carpet or replace it with vinyl, the price difference was only three hundred dollars. Staff would much rather have vinyl in there just because of the patient population that comes through.
Oh, I was just gonna ask what part of?
It's the way, so all the carpet, they would replace all the carpets. So the waiting room area and then the hallway between the exam rooms is it's all covered and the hallway to the bathroom is carpet right now.
Um, any estimate, guesstimate of the cost of that?
I don't have the total, but I know they just said the price difference is three hundred dollars, so it is going into our capital list for next year.
Is it gonna cause any more extra work since it's down on the first floor? And the vinyl would be a little bit slipper than the than the carpet. People could slip and fall then?
They don't anticipate that. Um, we've got other clinics that have a lot of vinyl. Dermatology is one of them on the first floor. So and we do have rugs when you come into the walkway in the medical arts center for people to kind of wipe their feet and clean their feet up.
Okay, well, that's good. So we won't have increased fall that that uh Mandy would have to have on her dashboard.
I don't know if we can predict that, but is there space already? There's vinyl in between the carpet that you're talking about?
No, there's um, there's vinyl in the exam rooms, but everything else is carpet in there. So the waiting area is carpet. There's vinyl when you walk into the building.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They're already crossing vinyl before they're getting to that carpet. And then it probably would have already fallen, felt they're gonna
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Risk is part right for the weather.
Yeah, the risk is closer to the front entrance than that area. I wouldn't be thinking they would be wiping their feet off there that far in.
Vinyl seems really nice for cleaning.
And then I did get an answer from Angelo, who's the clinic manager at FME. Medicare Advantage Plans, they do offer an annual exam, but they're scheduled as an annual exam and not scheduled as a Medicare wellness visit. So they're not being counted in the Medicare wellness visits because it really is not a Medicare wellness.
Thanks for clarifying. Any other questions for Stacy?
Just worth a note, but the parting that guy stuff, usually we just run those through our maintenance. Um, facilities gets a a good size maintenance budget each year and then they triage and prioritize those kinds of maintenance replacement things. We're continually doing painting, ceiling tiles and flooring.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, can I, I had someone bring up, this is probably not appropriate place, but the bulbs in the MAC are really dusty and I actually had someone tell me that.
Are you, are you talking about the hanging chandelier you walk in? So I think it was designed to look like that is what I've been told.
Like foggy sort of look?
Shandeleer.
It is, it is, it is Ellesberg dust.
I need to go in and look at that.
I wouldn't have said anything was about to, I was in there the other day, I'm like, you know, it kind of is dusty.
I know we had it cleaned for the open house.
Yeah, it's papering a chair.
Yeah.
Couple times a year.
Noted. Might need a different chandelier if it requires a cherry vector to dust it. As a leaf blower. Ceiling paint.
Any other questions for Stacy? Thank you. Thanks, Stacy. All right, and then we will move on to our medical staff. With the chief of staff, Dr. Robert Hapi, Dr. Hapi.
Yeah, my report is on page uh forty. As you can see, the medical executive committee are quite busy uh this month and we had a total of uh twenty-two reappointments, uh credentialing files were reviewed and then four initial appointments. So a total of twenty-six, uh and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Has everyone had a chance to review the outline?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any questions for Dr. Hapi before we take motion?
It it feels like our numbers get bigger each month.
These reappointments.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
All right, a motion from Bob to approve.
Second?
Second from John. Any further discussion?
Well, Dr. Hapi did a really great job going over these twenty-six. Uh, that medical staff, the service committee did a great job doing this. Uh, because that's a lot of of providers that we needed, so thank you, Dr. Hapi.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Hapi and the NBC.
And Shannon does a lot behind the scenes too to get this ready.
Yeah.
Okay, so that we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the NBC recommendations for appointment and reappointment as listed here, please say aye.
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 Anything else, Dr. Hapi?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you very much. And we move on to our chief medical officer, uh, Kevin Mark, Dr. Mark.
My report begins on page forty-one. I would just point out that uh in my medical staff paragraph, I completely failed to capture the uh work that was done by NBC this month. Uh, the correct numbers, if Dr. Hapi reported, are four. Considered for initial appointment, no status changes, twenty-two reappointments and one pending. And that will take any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Martin about his report?
So, uh, Dr. O'Brien retired a couple days ago.
Right.
And so he's no connection to, I mean, he's not keeping any privileges or anything going forward.
In fact, he he did not renew his license.
Okay.
So it expired on his birthday.
As as we told, I thank him for all his services. He's a really wonderful gentleman, so.
This is the first board meeting that he's not been on since I've been with.
It's the first board meeting he hasn't been at for probably twenty-two years.
Yeah.
I know, I kept looking.
Any, any change of physician type recruitment as far as is it getting easier? Is it still just crazy hard?
We're, right now is probably the best time of year. Uh, for new grads.
And a couple of neurologists I'm hearing about.
But um for mid-career, that's harder and one of the things we've tried to be very cautious of.
Is that school year related source?
Yeah. Uh, residencies in in at the end of June. And so the folks that are, well, one of the trends we're seeing. Normally, I would expect us to be getting a lot from twenty-twenty-five grads right now. We're hearing from twenty-twenty-six grads. Vascular surgery, um, we have had a couple of mid-career applicants, but we also have five applicants that are in fellow's training. So they were considered vascular surgeons yet, they're fellows. But uh in terms of the other uh physician specialties, um, it's hit or miss. Uh, I was surprised at the traction we got with vascular surgery. But I, really, I think we've done a good job of being an employer of choice. We aren't, we aren't losing applicants because of our benefits or because of our compensation. We're losing them because we aren't close enough to Seattle or because we have been successful enough at recruitment that it's getting harder for us to get people to qualify for longer payment. We no longer have the same healthcare shortage score that we had six years ago. But it's still a competitive market.
Do you think cars would help?
Absolutely. Yeah, well, I, as an aside, just the present presence of the ED chargers, um prompted Dr. Schmelzer to jump and buy an electric vehicle. So I don't know, but there there's perks and perks there.
Thank you.
Any other discussions, questions for Dr. Mark?
Bikes.
Mm-hmm, especially in the winter.
Okay, uh, thank you, thank you, Dr. Mark. Uh, then we'll move on to finance with our chief financial officer, Jason Adler. Jason?
Thank you. So September financials were were mixed, stats were mixed. Um, the hospital was a little bit over budget while some of the ancillary services were under budget. So admissions, patient days, ER visits, urgent care, all exceeded targets and budgets. Um, resulted in total charges for the month being under budget by a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Think it is worth noting, September's budget, just based on the budget spread based on the number of weekdays and week-end days of the month and holidays. So September's budget is twenty-point-seven million. October's budget, again, just based on days, is twenty-three-point-two millions. About two and a half million dollars more expected in October. But anyway, we just missed that in September, fifty-two thousand dollars. Contractual adjustments were quite favorable for the month just due to the composition of our accounts receivable. That calculates that that adjustment estimate and then also adding in the safety net assessment funds that lowers our contractual adjustment. That that funding this year for twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five increased very significantly. The benefit was only about eighty thousand dollars a year before and we're expecting about one point nine million dollars this year and next year from that funding source. Just with the recent success in recruitment, we have no locum providers anywhere except for in women's health. And by the end of November, we anticipate having no locum providers even in OB. So this was a massive accomplishment from where we were a year ago in recruitment retention area.
Yeah, we should. Let that sit. That's really good.
That's huge.
Especially when you look at, sorry, uh, when you look at what's happening in other places.
As I discussed, it's a disruption to patient flow too, so they can't establish at these, what these are. Or they think they established with the locums and then they have a new one four months later.
Especially if they don't understand they're seeing a locum.
Exactly, and it's very disruptive for the patient, um, for credentialing staff, for all staff. You know, even MAs, PSRs, I mean, work with a locum by the time they get it figured out there on their next assignment. So the, it bridged us through, we made it through and hopefully we avoid having that many locums at one time again.
I I would just like to thank the board. This twenty-twenty-four has been a rough year. And it's a board meeting, uh, finance has been a really tough Tuesday morning. Uh, the financial needs has not been great. I I think Jason and the and Scott before him did a good job of prepping the board for what we knew would be a tough year, but not every board would give us that grace without, you know, beating us up every month, beating us up every finance committee. Really appreciate sort of the sophistication of understanding that we had to get through this, the expansion. And Amy and her folks have done an outstanding job of keeping surgery pretty much coming along at par. But just all the changes, we we had to rebuild a lot and so I really appreciate board understanding that. It's allowing that hard work and
Shout out to Dr. Mark's staff, medical staff, so Shannon and Elise for credentialing all these providers and privileging. Um, or trying to credential, at least giving packets and insurance to hold them. It's, it's been huge. AR came down, accounts receivable came down from forty-nine-point-eight million to forty-eight-point-seven million, so that's just the rev cycle team doing their work collecting, but although I possess that the the revenue in September is lighter than usual months, so we don't have as much adding to the pot. Work it down.
I swear I'll be like, oh, my keys.
Yeah. Um, planned and expected throughout twenty-twenty-four, just as I noted before, for cash to be decreasing as we expand on the the cap, the expansion project. Did get a bump in cash in September because we received that ten million dollar bond. But we also paid six and a half million for the land purchase, so we did net a three and a half million dollar bump in September's cash. And just to note again, one-day cash is currently running at three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Any questions on that part of the data?
Did one, did we get a final rate on that bond? Like four point two or?
Three point two.
Three, three point two. Yeah. I just didn't think we got that number.
Um, capital, I just wanted to know, very likely next month, I'll bring you to the board a request for the Harvest Augmented Reality Surgical Guidance System. This is a request from our meeting surgeon, Dr. Longo. That he feels will enhance his um total hip replacement procedures. And also be a tool to help attract the market patients as well to his panel. Um, and along with that, I would, I'll try to bring the fracture table. It's requested by the floor department and Dr. Longo, so our parent fracture table is twenty-seven years old. Uh, very outdated technology and a new fracture table.
And Dr. Longo has been able to do with the current table, but that table was one of the things that was frequently cited as being so antiquated that it necessitated transfers of certain injuries. I mentioned this to Dr. Solberg, he pointed out the tape we have uh was broadened about the time Dr. Burshier
And Dr. Barrett had also requested a new table, but
And once that approved, any ideas that back order, this is a pretty quick delivery, so any sense of that?
I know they'll cash the check quickly.
Uh, materials management, just wanted to know, they threw a big change, switching over from Office Max for our our most high samples and staples will also take all of our standard prep product materials. Estimating a cost savings, but it's also going to really streamline materials management's process of really internal controls around what can be purchased. Office Max is open. There's probably sixty people in the organization that can order from Office Max and you can order anything from coffee to tablets and food and sandwiches. I mean, is everything open? And this is more of a contained system, so it's a new fruit items.
Uh, and we're still routing what we can through Geralds for local?
Yeah. Yeah, it's currently just paper.
Okay.
Yep. So excited to have that change. And then a couple other changes, revenue cycle operation, so Lisa got the reported last month. Accepted a new position over both HIM and Patient Financial Services. And we have two managers accepted, uh, Patient Financial Services Manager, Daniel Palmer and a coding manager, Haley Engras. So that's part of just reorganizing the revenue cycle and HIM operations. Under one arm there, under Lisa, the staff have been very receptive and are really appreciating this change and being brought along. Um, Lisa, if you don't met her, she drives a wonderful culture and they're all very excited for this change. It's ongoing, so still working on that. Any questions on narrative? On the stats, talked clear on the narrative, but one thing just to point out, the year-to-date TE's on row thirty-one through thirty-three are incorrect. But the month's FT is correct, so something in the data, there was a hiccup there, try to figure out what happened. And then six and a half, thirty-seven FTs. Have any questions on stats? Over to the financial statements or the financial dashboard? Like to always touch on Medicare Advantage, so again, we're just running that thirteen percent Medicare. Really hope that our efforts and really make national news reference of beating Medicare Advantage down, so hopefully.
What if people were setting out the second weather down the branch in the window and people were educating themselves?
They just went in the daily record.
Okay.
So we did do that. Then we put notices at, uh, front of the clinic stations, right? We're, we got a lot of publicity with it because we're getting a lot of phone calls. I get quite a few emails, and the, the Shiva person who calls me regularly now too and checks in. I did get one confirmed call and somebody called and let me know they changed. So we got one.
I think I did.
I'll say people to switch over.
Yeah.
I'll take slow process. It is.
One's probably enough to pay for the campaign.
Definitely.
Then there's the window.
Well, it's that.
December seventh.
It can take somewhere early December, but then a weird one reopens at January first through March, or it's incredibly confusing.
Yeah, I will, uh, pretend to know the details.
Uh, you see on the cash around there, so on that period of November, I think March, and so, and then go on the expansion project. Uh, spending, then it's really flat out, and we ticked up in cash there in September. Really August and September cash has increased as our, our spending slowed with the expansion project. And I'm sorry, on the narrative, I think I did totally not mention, so we were in an operating gain of five hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for the month of September. That positive is largely due to favorable contraction adjustment and that snap funding. Wonderful to be above the black line there. Any questions? Truly all I had to comment on.
Um, I was gonna say, I just want clarification of all, I was talking to Julie yesterday. Twenty twenty-four, it's been a tough year financially, but like you said, we've, we've hit or through it. But it feels like as the expansion project comes to an end, and we get that, but that we're positioned maybe twenty twenty-five, you start to go back in the direction we're more used to and stuff. Does that match thinking and stuff?
Yeah, it's been a tough, healthcare in general has just been a really so healthcare inflation over the last three years has been massive. Um, the supply chain's been broken since COVID. We're just used to it now. But we are very well positioned with the expansion to be ramping up, and it's, we're fortunate to have the space that doing this ortho remodel is not going to disrupt services. And we're able to juggle things around because we have the space to do that. So I think we're very well positioned.
And things like the anesthesia capacity we have now that we didn't, and again, that was a cost that we've borne throughout twenty twenty-four. Now we didn't wait till the last minute to really capture that.
And hopefully the OB group being stable and fully staffed.
Yep.
Maybe can start to recapture some people who are going out of accounting.
Yeah, I don't know if it's just this month or if it is that we're recapturing that already, but I mean, it looks like we're running I think twenty-six deliveries right now.
Almost one day, that's.
Thirty days. Yeah, so for, over the last thirty day period in a while. So they are if that's the a signal of a new trend or it's just a anomaly for the month, but we're well positioned with, with family birthing, OB, and OB's health in general.
I think that probably is a trend. We had capped the number of new OB patients that we would see, and we'd looked at that cap. So I'm delighted that people have rediscovered us. My great fear was that we would teach the whole patients to go elsewhere.
And hearing wonderful things from the, about the new OB gen, Doc, Dr. Johns is the one that's regularly in clinic right now, and I heard great things from our staff and from community members.
A lot of his patients want to follow him.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, the only problem has been we can't get all of his patients in.
He is giving us extra days, but November and December to get through some things.
I did have just on page fifty-four and fifty-five to note, um, Scott Casey did this submission for resculping for the RHC conics. So resculping is something we have to do with Medicaid to get the, the most of our cost-based reimbursement out of Medicaid. You have to demonstrate that your RHC has changed in scope to be able to get a new RHC rate that is based on the Medicare cost report submission. And we submitted this in June twenty twenty-four, and we just get, get noticed that they approved our accepted our resculping. So the result of it is our encounter rates will go up pretty significantly. You see internal medicine there goes up to five hundred and twenty-three dollars. The Menopar Center, three ninety-two, and FAMID home, three fifty-six. These rates, so it's all Medicaid patients, there's no out-of-pocket portion, so it's really just the best revenue grabber that doesn't touch the patient. So we try to keep up on those. It'll result in about a half a million additional per year in revenue. That's all I have.
Any other questions for Jason? Right, thank you, Jason. Okay, then we move on to, uh, Michelle, we're our chief public relations officer, Michelle.
Hey, guys, I apologize, note for no board report this month. I was actually on vacation for quite a while, and I attended, um, that AHA conference for her uh, marketer's strategy and developing in Denver. So I did not, I was not able to do that. Um, so what we have been doing, I do want to follow up on the Medicare Advantage conversation that we've been talking about. Um, you may recall about, I think it was two months ago that that was the topic of our editorial that we run monthly in the daily record, and we had some communication at the front desk that mirrored that editorial. And we have, are now modifying that to ads in the daily record and the Tribune and social media to, uh, for people to really look at the plans as they're going through open enrollment. Make sure that their, um, providers are covered, that they're used to seeing, and to seek out advice from the insurance brokers. So walking that line of, you know, please make sure you're aware of what's happening without making specific recommendations for anyone. Um, so we're doing that, and then really over the last month, the, the major lift in my department is we now have a new intranet system called KEN, the KVH Employee Network. That was designed, actually, um, there's a lot of confusion between people between an internet and an intranet. And so the team was thinking, oh, this is a great way, since we have to do this transition. You may remember our, our existing internet was um, quite archaic and no longer being supported, so it was a transition that we needed to make. Uh, but we also wanted to make, to make things more visible and easier to navigate and really bring things up to current standards for our staff. So that went live while I was gone. Um, my team, especially Kirsten, who's our digital um, designer, has been working non-stop, huge lift on that with her implementation team. Um, to be expected, I think there are a few bumps, but overall, the feedback has been very, very well received. Other than that, I will be happy to take any questions.
We have the community health assessment to do.
You do have the community health assessment. That is just the background, uh, material. We didn't have it in last month's board report, but it's the background review that supported the improvement plan that you adopted last month.
Yeah. Don't we have to?
Yes, it needs to be adopted.
Needs to be adopted.
Yes.
So, um, does anybody have a question about that? Because we're going to. Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt the community health assessment?
I'll move that we adopt the community health assessment.
All right, motion from Erica, second from Terry. Any further questions, conversation? All those in favor of adopting the community health assessment, please say aye.
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 All right, any other questions for Michelle? Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, our stuff should be pretty quick, but I want to be, uh, respectful of your time. I know a lot of you have been here from the very early. So we'll take a four-minute break so anybody can clear out who wants to. Um, and we'll reconvene at seven twenty to continue to be regular meeting. Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I know.
Yes.
More than just honestly, want to push up. Fortunately, he's doing. Travel with somebody. I was thinking if I go and tell the one advantage. East of Jacksonville. I've been there.
Nice way and see him.
Uh, maybe I can travel with you.
And it was.
That'd be really fun again.
Thank you. All of you, thank you. You'll still see me. I'm still getting better. Oh, yeah. You might see my little name and number pop.
Wonderful stuff.
But I'm still.
I still appreciate everything you've done, because you've been a great deal with being there.
Well, great dude. Yeah. No, well, I think not yet. This is just a brief break to let everyone clear out before we get to just our boards.
We're still recording, right?
Yeah, we're still in meeting.
Then I'll go over here and talk to me.
Which, which Mandy?
I was gonna leave.
Well, no.
He said whatever that wanted.
If I could stick around.
We, we just need a man.
You get her.
I'm the girl.
That one thing, I feel bad.
Message. The coffee dinner that I didn't go to. Sorry, that was a long time ago. I became symptomatic because of positive.
I'm shooting for it.
So I'm so glad I didn't go and just want everybody. But, um. Yeah, I missed you guys too. Thankfully, it was just, it was a nuisance go, and it wasn't awful. It was number four for me.
Oh, she did a fortune for me.
I believe one time.
What's that?
One time. My husband's had it three times.
Maggie, while we're on break, should we mute?
I mean, it's still an open public meeting.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we just need to remember that we're still being recorded and.
And that COVID is still here.
It is still fine here.
Anyhow, um, I missed it.
Now, you asked me, I forgot to ask, but last week, you were.
Very full.
Is it?
Yes.
Is it still the respiratory related stuff?
I don't know the actual specifics of the patients. I think I just overheard a conversation about and I think actually there's some orthopedic stuff today. On top of whatever else was here. Everything. But we did have some admissions related to COVID.
Sweaty bag.
I love that.
But I think it's nice and warm when we present our age.
What should I go?
Oh, look at me, just making a mess. You saw me spill my water.
Okay, let's, uh, let's get started here again, Terry. All right. Um, go back and break. Uh, no education in board reports, no old business, new business. Since this is our last regular meeting of the, uh, the year, we'll talk about that maybe a little bit. Uh, we need to elect board officers for twenty twenty-five. I know that, uh, we have a slate of officers, uh, to nominate.
Can I share that now?
Please.
I would like to propose a slate and that we vote on the slate as a poll. And that slate would be President John Ward, Vice President Bob Davis, Secretary Terry Clark. That's two Terries, or Secretary Terry. So that is the slate that I propose we vote on.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, that's, so Erica's motion to approve that slate of officers. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, second from Terry. Any further discussion?
Super bomb.
All those in favor of, uh, this slate of officers with John Ward as president, Bob Davis as VP, Terry Clark as secretary for twenty twenty-five, please say aye.
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 Okay.
Due to John.
That's good. So, um, and then we have board committees, this is on page fifty-seven. Uh, first regarding the standing board committees. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that everybody on the board is happy with where they are now. As I, as I understand it, uh, the people of the SLP, they're happy with where we are. So, uh, unless there are any objections, I, I assume we can just leave it as is. Is everybody good with it?
Yes. I, I'm good with it, but, uh, I've told you several times before, if you need somebody else in another committee, uh, I, I'd be glad to do it.
Okay.
Uh, because I have, uh, I, I, I can do it.
Housekeeping please, I O zero. Housekeeping please, I O zero. Thank you.
Been on a couple of these other committees. Uh, and, uh, Bob does a really good job with our foundation. And so I'm glad that Bob can be on there. I was on that committee a little bit, and I'm an alternative. But I was wondering whether, uh, on those committees where we only have one person in, uh, maybe the other person should be able to pop in once in a while, since they're there in the alternative.
Well, in some of these committees, uh, they're just ad hoc members, just to, just to sort of witness what's going on. And to kind of report back as necessary. We don't, don't wanna you know, have too many people there. It might seem, uh, like we're sort of keeping an eye on things. This is really just to report back. Uh, so I, I, I hesitate to sort of double our representation on those committees.
So like, um, I mean, I was thinking about, because I know we're kind of not quite doing the joint districts committee, but it would be appropriate if I wanted to go up there and just as a citizen.
Yeah.
Of the county.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, because, you know, it's yeah, I know all those people and, and I know it's good to keep relations going and.
Well, I've enjoyed going up there too, because I know a lot of those people up there too.
Yeah, well, you know, open meetings, just like here, so anyway, so I'll be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Speaking of, so before, so I'll talk about the ad hoc committees in one second, but everybody's good then with standing board committees?
Yeah, the only thing I'm gonna say, since it's actually listed here, I was gonna ask Bob if you'd like to switch back to be the chair of the finance committee again starting in twenty twenty-five, or if you like the way it is. Either way, it's fine with me.
I'm, I'm fine now, yes.
Okay.
I just maybe following the year, okay? Sounds good.
Okay. So, uh, so that's, we don't need to make a motion, do we?
Yeah, you do need.
We do need to make, okay, so let's talk about the ad hoc committees.
One thing too, under the UI.
Yeah.
For the meeting schedule, we would like to change it to the second Monday. It seems like that's where the schedule's been landing.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, second Monday, actually not the third Monday.
Yes.
Okay, and regarding the ad hoc committees, um, I believe the provider values line of the committee is basically dissolved, so that's gone. And the joint districts committee is gone. Um, the CEO evaluation subcommittee, that's traditionally been, uh, uh, the president, vice president, so I think the twenty twenty-five members should be, uh, John and Bob. We don't need alternates for that. Uh, so is everyone good? We get rid of the first and third committees there, which is basically default. And then we, uh, we switch out for twenty twenty-five. Uh, John and Bob as president and vice president. Is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, that's all right.
I was just gonna say, since we're actually noting the schedule, I was gonna ask on the finance committee, because it's just been that way forever, and it used to meet down in the cafeteria a long time ago. If the core people like where it's at Tuesday morning, it's at seven thirty.
I do, I love it.
Okay, get it out of your free work day and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how do you feel?
I'm open to whatever's best for the committee. Yeah, seven thirty, thirty, it doesn't.
I think I should move it down to five.
See how far we can go with it.
After five.
Any other time it'd also be good for you, you just think this.
I mean, I can make time that other, that, you know, I'm an early riser.
The only thing I worry about is staff, is does your staff come in early on those days where they're sitting on this meeting?
Well, they do.
I, I hate to push.
Sometimes they're crawling in, it, you know, the. Me, Scott, James, all have young kiddos at home in the morning is kind of our best time with the kiddos, but it's.
One find a different time.
It's one day a month and seven thirty is fine as well, so. And we can take it up in finance.
And my question is, do we have to make this decision as part of this, or can we make it separately if we feel?
Yeah, no, you can change it, this doesn't put anything in stone, I mean, we haven't been leading.
No, I think it's mainly just the committee members.
Okay, if it was in stone, I want to do it now, but it feels like we can have a discussion, it's appropriate.
I can put on the agenda.
Okay.
And and talk to Jerry with.
Exactly.
I think it's a huge asset.
I love that extra, yeah, his thoughts he brings to it.
So with those changes, uh, there's change to the meeting schedule for Q I council, getting rid of provider values alignment and joint district committee. And changing with twenty twenty five members for the CEO evaluation subcommittee, with those changes, I do have a motion to approve the uh. Twenty twenty five committees and.
Did you say there was a change in the Q I council?
Uh, just the meeting schedule.
Oh, okay.
Change to the second Monday.
That's what I thought the change was.
It's still you and me, Terry, don't worry.
Okay, because I love that committee.
Yeah.
And you're a great chair.
Well, thanks, Terry. All right, so everybody's, uh, do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty five committees in meeting?
I move to approve the twenty twenty five committees as amended.
Second.
Second from John, uh, all those in favor, please say aye. All right, then we have the uh board calendar, and I do want to mention one thing as we look at the board calendar. We will have a resolution at the December fifth board meeting to approve regular meeting dates of the board of commissioners for calendar year twenty twenty five. I won't give you a lot of detail on this, but uh, the basic. Uh, the basic point here is that just because it's not on the fourth Thursday, doesn't make it necessarily a special meeting, we've always thought that. But if it's set on the calendar, it's it's public science, everyone knows about it, it can be considered a regular meeting. But what we'll do to sort of solidify that. Is at the December fifth meeting, we will approve these regular meeting dates, which will include the ones that are shifted from the fourth. Um, for that calendar.
So then November and December won't be special meetings.
It will be a regular meeting.
Nice.
But that'll be approved at the next year.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the idea, so we will officially approve the calendar and this is just another way to. Kind of signify the fact that these are regular meetings, even though they are not at a regular times.
And the officer changes we're making, do they take place in the first January meeting or the second January meeting, because the first one is actually a December meeting?
December meeting that occurs in January historically.
Is where we switch our, so when, yeah, that's, January starts, the switch has been made.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm gonna be absent uh on the eighth of uh of, well, it's not the eighth, it's the second this year. Second of Ja- January, so. Yeah, but anyway, uh, so that's what it is. Okay, so anyway, that, just keep that in mind.
I was gonna say too, you don't have to approve the calendar, doesn't need.
Yeah, we don't have to prove it, because. Okay, anything else uh as far as new business goes before we go in uh go into executive session? Julie, how much time do you need?
Um, I just wanted a very brief update, three minutes.
Okay, so um, so I think we'll need. Uh, let's take a four minute break to stitch thirty, sorry, till seven thirty five. And then we will go into executive session until. Eight thirty five, okay? Um, so the regular, sorry, the open meeting is uh, we're not going to break, going to executive session. Then at seven thirty five.
Action anticipated?
There is action anticipated uh when we reconvene.